Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, the 19th of February, County Commission Meet. It's good having you all here today.
Do we need to open up the back for more people?
I think we got it covered today. It's good to have everybody here. We will have an invocation this morning by Zachary Dam and a pledge of allegiance by Cassie Bybee, and the thought of the day will be by Commissioner Faur. So we will go to that point. Zachary?
If you'll please rise and repeat it.
Invocation?
Okay, fine. Well, then I'll pray. I can do both.
Okay.
I'll pray now. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful that we could assemble here today as a body political. We're grateful, Father in Heaven, for the trust or for the trust that's been placed upon us. Help us, Father in Heaven, to be calm in our decision-making. Grateful, Father in Heaven, for those who care. Please bless them. Also bless those who are participating. Be aware in the future and who are here in person. May also ask a blessing on those who are caused to mourn for their losses in various tragedies. We're grateful for the moisture we've received. This is our prayer in the name of the Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Now, if you'll please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Faur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We celebrated President's Day yesterday, and I thought this would be an appropriate time to discuss and talk about our executive branch of the government, in particular the Presidents. So I have a little trivia question for Commission or anybody in the audience who would like to answer. So can you tell me who the tallest President was?
No, I don't think it was Abe.
Abe Lincoln. There was actually two. Abe Lincoln was one.
Who?
Washington. No, it was actually Abraham Lincoln, and I think it was, maybe incorrect us with a poke, I think, was the second. They were both six foot four. So who was the shortest?
Who?
James Madison, five foot four, 100 pounds.
100 pounds?
100 pounds. He was a little guy. Yeah, I'd go to the gym, so maybe.
He's got a street named after him up here.
He does. And lastly, so trivia, who was the only President to be elected unanimously? George Washington. All colonies voted for him, exactly. So he was the only one that's ever been unanimously elected. So with that, I have a couple of quotes from my favorite Presidents. I want to start with Abraham Lincoln. And it was hard making a decision on which President actually had the greatest impact. I think we could debate that for a period of time. But Abraham Lincoln said this, "Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power." I think that's a true statement.
Wow, that's good.
Theodore Roosevelt, one of my favorite, everybody remember Teddy. Great President in my mind, not quite as widely recognized as some of our others, said this, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." Teddy Roosevelt. And finally, a man that we had a, one time, a room up in the Commission Office named after Ronald Reagan, I think it's been changed to Mitt Romney. But Ronald Reagan said this, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same." Ronald Reagan. I think that's very true, especially in today's world. We're fighting for freedom every day in this world. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's great. All right. I want to say, sorry we were a couple of minutes late getting started today, but we had issues today. We've had a heavy morning already, and it's only 10:10. So here we go. All right, public comments. Is there anybody who would care to address the Commission this morning? All six of you. Doesn't look like it. Okay, we'll go on to the next thing. Consent items. We have a request for approval of the warrants, 1699 through 1707, and 436, 594 through 436, 970, for the amount of $1 million. Request for purchase orders in the amount of $164,842. Request for approval of the minutes, February 12. Request for beer license approval. Golden Spike Center for approval of surplus office equipment. Clerk auditor approval for $1,257. And property taxes for, this is 15-005-0098 for tax relief. So Ricky, can you tell us a little bit about that one?
Absolutely. This is, I don't know how much detail to go into, but this is an applicant who had submitted their report, or their application, and this virtually never happens, but we do not show record of ever receiving it. They have appealed that, and we went back and looked at their history, at the documents that they gave us, and decided that the county was most likely in error, and we'd like to grant the tax relief this year.
That's rare.
Yeah, super rare. First time in eight years that I know of.
Okay. Seven is approval for elective service benefit agreement by and between Weber County and former Sheriff Terry Thompson. Mrs. Swan, could we have you come up and explain that benefit so we all understand it? And you might also, while she's coming up, this is also a retirement agreement between Weber County and Brian Johansson, Roland Hawkins, and Catherine Pudlock. And you might explain also those three while you're.
Two line items.
Sure. So the elected official, Terry's retirement agreement is unique because it has the elected official provision that we saw with Kerry Gibson, and I believe it was June. We have since changed the policy so that any future elected officials or anyone elected after January 1st of 2019 will not receive that benefit. But because when Terry took office, this was in policy that we would offer the five years equivalent payout, cash payout, rather than the insurance or the option to choose either the insurance or the payout, he is allowed that benefit. So he has opted to accept the payout rather than do the five years of paid health insurance.
Now, does that benefit exist today?
It does not. We changed that in August of 2018.
Okay. And so for these three employees that have retired, they're getting, what is their benefit they're receiving?
So the three employees who are retiring, they receive five years of paid health insurance, which is the same amount Terry would have received had he chosen to take that. So he's not receiving any more than these employees would. He just has the option of taking it in a cash payout, whereas they do not.
Very good. Any questions for Mrs. Swan?
I have a motion, Mr. Chair. I would move that we take Consent Item 7, Request for Approval of Electoral Service Benefit Agreement by and between Weber County and Terry Thompson. Take that off the consent agenda and put that under an action item for the discussion.
Very good. Motion's to remove that from consent and put it down to action so we can have discussion.
So approve all items, number one through and including eight, with the exception of seven, to move down below.
That'd be correct.
I'll second that.
Very good. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very, oh, you know what? Normally I go to you guys to, let's, I'm sorry, we've already proven, but go ahead. Ricky, let's go back to you and have you go through the warrants and the purchases. I got a little ahead of myself there because we've been a little exercised about Item 7 this morning, and we're having quite a discussion. So could you go ahead and explain that?
Absolutely. Oh, and I did a check for the tallest U.S. Presidents. The third tallest U.S. President is Donald Trump, six foot three.
That's the second. Okay, good.
He's third.
Third, okay.
Also, today's paper, if you take a look, Weber County Elections Office won a federal award, which is nice.
And congratulations for that.
Thank you.
We're going to do something to honor you or something. We don't know what yet, but we got to do something. This is a big deal.
The team is phenomenal, and they have been for years, so.
You've done a great job, Ricky.
Thank you.
Your elections team then, too.
That's right.
You've trusted people. That's good.
We issued 13 purchase orders this week for $165,000. Half of that amount, or about $80,000, is for the library, and that is the annual maintenance contract for their automated material handling units. Those are the book units. Once you return your book, they go in and handle that in an automated fashion. 20% of that amount, or $33,000, is for the roads department, and that will go towards purchasing road salt. 16% or $26,000 is for the surveyor's office. This is a subscription, software subscription for Blue Review software and an app that they use in their office. We wrote 386 checks for $1.1 million. 39% of that amount, or $427,000, is for the transfer station, and that's almost exclusively disposal fees. 17% or $190,000 is for the fleet, and that is to purchase five trucks for the sheriff's office through their rotation program. 10% or $108,000 is corridor preservation. So these are WACOG funds that went primarily to Harrisville for their 110 North project, but a little bit also to North Ogden for their 400 East and 2600 North projects. And then lastly, we issued a $78,000 grant, or we paid a grant. It's a reimbursement to Ogden School Foundation for their 2018 Ramp Award. That's all.
Very good. Any questions for Ricky?
Nope.
Thanks, Ricky. Appreciate you. The job you guys do is great. All right, so I'm going to go to Item 0001, which was just created by the previous motion. And we're going to have a discussion about the benefit that is offered. Turns out, the one specifically we're talking about is elected officials. And so, Sarah, could you go on? Talk a little bit about that?
You bet. So again, just to touch base on what it is, county employees are given five years of paid health insurance. It's a program that's being phased out. So up until 2021, employees who retire before that date can receive five years, again, of paid health insurance, meaning the county pays our portion that we're currently paying, and the employee is still responsible for their portion. If the insurance increases year over year, again, they pay their portion, and it increases as county employees do. In 2014, that policy was changed a little bit. The Commission at the time, nobody who's sitting here, and I wasn't here at that time either, but they put in there that elected officials, instead of receiving the five years of health insurance, that they could receive a cash equivalent, depending on what they were enrolled in. So this was the case when Mr. Thompson took the sheriff's office. And so it's a benefit that he's allowed based on that past policy, again, when he took office. As Commissioner Jenkins said, we changed that policy in August of 2018 so that that no longer applies. But anyone who was in office at the time is still allowed what was promised to them when they took office.
So, Mr. Crockett, I might speak to you at this point. So the question is, and we're covering ground with plow once, but we're going to do it again. Since this is a benefit that was bestowed through our legislative action.
Correct.
If we reversed ourselves today, could we make that retroactive and take nine people out of that? And that nine people, we went over this morning, includes Terry Thompson, and goes down to me. I was the last one in. So there's nine of us that are on that today. Could we take that away?
So according to the policy, under Section K, it says that the policy may be changed at any time for any reason by the Board of Commissioners. However, every eligible retiree who qualifies to retire from county employment in accordance with this policy shall enter into an agreement with the county defining the obligations of the county and the eligible retiree. And upon final execution of that contract, the benefits described in the contract shall be deemed to be vested. So the critical point is, if there is a contract out there, if there isn't, the policy can be changed by the County Commission at any time.
That wasn't the question. Could we make it retroactive?
Retroactive to elected officials that are already? Yes, you can change the policy at any time if the elected official hasn't retired. But if there's ones who have already taken this benefit and retired, and there is a contract there, no, you cannot change that.
So do we have liability if we change it?
If there is a vested right, and you do something to, that would impact that, there could be liability. If there is no vested right, you have the ability to change that policy at any time you want.
So what is a vested right? Could you explain that in detail? Because let's take, for example, Mr. Hatch, sitting right next to you, right now. He fits in that category, or he's one of those nine. If we took this away today and said we're taking away from all elected officials, could Mr. Hatch sue us?
Sorry, Mr. Hatch, but in my opinion, no, he could not. Because there is no vested right. There is no contractual agreement between the individual and the county. This is just a policy that right has not been triggered, and I think that Section K is the language there. It's not vested until there is a signed contract between the eligible retiree and the county.
Mrs. Swan, would you like to comment to that? Because this is not the way I understood this.
I would say that's sort of not the way I understood it as well, but maybe it was more along the lines of because we had promised that. I don't know. We'd have to go back to the drawing board on it.
I mean, there might be an expectation among the elected officials that this could be a benefit, but benefits, I've seen them change all the time. At least, the way that I've understood, interpreted the legal cases, is that there really is no vested right, a legally enforceable right, until there is actual, an actual contract in place.
Yeah, it was my assumption that this was a vested right, which was why we developed the policy this way that we did.
So Sarah, you say, you think there is a vested right or not?
No, that's just the way I understood it at the time, which is why.
So you thought it was more a promise?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, promises, in my opinion, could be changed with policy.
I thought it was a vested right.
You thought it was a vested right?
Yes, yes.
And if this is a.
Excuse me, just for a second, and I'll make it more. My understanding, when we had this discussion last August, the reason I made the decision based on my understanding at the time was that this was a vested right for all of the nine that we're talking about. But we, and because it was a vested right, that the liability outweighed the other, and so that, and that's how I based my decision.
Well, this has happened twice, and now Terry's the third time.
Sure.
It happened with Kerry Gibson. It happened with James Ebert, and now Terry Thompson.
And there were others before that. So Matt Bell.
Well, yeah, but since I've been here.
Sure.
Is what I meant to say. I'm sorry. And I was of the opinion that we really had no choice in the matter, that it was a right that they owned, and that we had committed to that through an ordinance. It's in our, it's in our law.
It's not an ordinance. This is a policy.
Okay, well, it's a written policy. It's something that we passed.
It's a written policy, and I'm happy to sit down with the parties, if you would like, and research this. But my understanding is, and according to the language of Section K, there is no vested right until there is an actual signed contract.
Wouldn't you get a signed, excuse me? Wouldn't you get a signed contract by the time you conclude your employment? Isn't that when you do the contract?
You would get a signed contract from one party, but the County Commission is the other signer of that contract.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Wouldn't, so are you saying, normally when you sign a contract, it's, as my research has showed, it's at the conclusion of their employment with the county, not in the middle of their employment of the county?
Yeah, it's, the contract would come at the conclusion of the employment. The individual's sign, and then it would come to the County Commission for approval after they've already finished working.
Then that language supports, with what you said, then that supports the language of a vested right, as we understood it in August. Doesn't that make sense?
If there was a vested right, as far as people who had previously received it, that became vested, the cash payout, once it was signed. But it didn't, the right didn't vest, and maybe I'm not understanding your question. The right did not vest with the changing of the policy. It pertains to when each individual would retire.
Or would retire, or I thought it was when they were elected. That's how I remember it. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How to entertain a motion that we take this item and we hold it from the agenda till we were able to get a little more research and go back and see the minutes? I remember certain things, and maybe I'm remembering them incorrectly, but I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we, if we've made a mistake, I don't want to make a mistake again.
So you'd like to make a motion?
I'd like to, if you were to entertain a motion.
Yes, I'd entertain.
I'd make the motion that we take this item and table it so that we can do some additional research with regards to the minutes and the discussion on it.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that, but I want to speak to that motion.
Go ahead.
So obviously, that policy decision made in August was made that included nine people, anybody elected after 2000, January 19. The only people that affected, obviously, would be myself and Sheriff Arbonne sitting in the back of the room. I struggle with this policy. I think it's an unfair policy for the taxpayers in Weber County. I look at the taxpayers in this county that struggle every year to pay property tax, and to see these huge payouts, quite frankly, is unfair. It's terrible policy. I've also done some research and checked with some attorneys at the state legislative, and they felt the same way that our attorney said, that unless you can prove that it's a vested right, it's a policy change. We change policy at the state every year, dealing with retirement insurance, because we change policy when it's in the best interest of the taxpayer. The current policy is in no way in the best interest of the taxpayer. It benefits very few. It's voted on by those that it benefits. It was voted on at that time. So I think we take a hard look at this. I'm on record and still maintain that this needs to be retroactive. We need to make sure that this payout is discontinued now and forever. For somebody to take a $60,000-plus payout on Monday and the next day go to work for a state agency or any state agency that pays their insurance, quite frankly, boggles my mind. I can't accept that for the taxpayers in Weber County. So I'm in a good position because I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight, other than the dog in the fight is the taxpayers in Weber County that I was voted on to stop policy very similar to what we see happening today. So I would support that motion, but I'd also say that we have to look at the vested rights. We can't, just because we made a promise, does not mean we can't change that. We do that every day. We make the decisions to change policy when that policy changes in the best interest of our taxpayers. So that's where I stand on it. I'm going to vote in favor of postponing, but we need to make sure that our legal analysis looks at the legal analysis, not what we think is going to benefit ourselves or some people in the elected office. That's not what we're here for.
I think, I think you'd find support with both Commissioner Jenkins and myself on that. We need to look what's the best, and that's what we did, and that's what I'm saying to you, Commissioners, that's what we felt, what we were doing in August at the time. And so just for verification, or for, based on verification.
Sure, and we've done the research on this. We'll go poll our opinions in the cases, and we'll share that with you.
Yeah, and that was my understanding, and I've been glad, I know Commissioner Jenkins had similar discussions with a number of voters in this county that also had issues with this policy. And I know that he was with the understanding that this couldn't be made retroactive. It's my understanding that it can be. So I think that's what we need to make a decision on.
And for me, you know, let's go back to the consent items, if I may, Mr. Chair. We have one that's different than the other three that was approved. The employment contracts with the other three are the same. It just allows one, that right in advance, to collect it all. I didn't agree with it back in August. I thought it was self-serving, and, but we felt like, because of the vested interest and others who came on board, since there are other elected officials, which we're saying now are nine, I made my decision based, at that time, based on the information that I had. And so I agree with you wholeheartedly, Commissioner, to take a payout and then go to work the next day for a state agency or someone that pays it. The whole design for this was to take care of the person in the event that that didn't happen, and I think that robs people of Weber County. So that'd be where I'd be at that. But I think it's right to table it. Again, I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd call for the, call for the question.
I'm ready to call it. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Do I hear any opposed? It's unanimous vote. Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate your comments. Chris, we look forward to your report, and make sure you apprise Mr. Swan about that whole thing, too, because she's our, she has our HR department.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. All right. That was a good discussion. Thank you. Appreciate that. So with that, we go to the G items, our action items. First item on there is Request for Approval of Resolution of the County of Weber Appointing Trustees to the Governing Board of the Little Mount Service Area.
Good morning.
Stacy Skeen.
Good morning.
I received notice to post again for the Little Mountain Service Area. Stacy, will you bring the mic down? This has been a hard board to fill, so it's been posted a couple of times. I received one application from Brian Moss, and then because there are more vacancies than there were applicants, then the Commission has the authority to appoint one of you three as a member to this board. With that, there would still be four more positions that need to be filled unless this group, this board decides to decrease the number of members on their board.
That membership is what today? Nine?
Seven.
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 Seven, mm-hmm.
Well, so if there's still four vacancies, that means there's only three on the board as of this appointing.
Yes, and then the other members that are on the board can continue serving until they're replaced.
Oh, so this will complete all seven then?
No. There will, there's still four that are expired.
But they can still serve.
They can still serve until they're replaced. So, and when I've had contact with a member of this board, he was checking into the bylaws to see if they could reduce the number to five or even three.
Is that person the chairman?
I don't know. I've been communicating with Lance Wood. He's with the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District.
Well, I'll be appointed to that board, so we'll figure that out when they get out there. So right now, today, that's a sewer board, just so you understand.
Do you know anything about sewers?
I do know about sewers. You know, it's interesting, when you go that far out west, residential, none of them are on the sewer. So I was a little surprised to see a sewer board out there. What happens is the primary users of that are Compass Minerals, Western Zirconium. Those are the two big plants. And then right there at that intersection, there's a couple of buildings that are on it. And other than that, that's it. So this is built specifically for the industry, lake industries, and those at the west part of the county.
Yeah.
I think it's far enough west, I'm not sure we could hook residential on it if we want to. Well, I guess you can pump sewage anywhere, so you probably could, but. Well, I guess you can pump sewage anywhere, so you probably could, but anyway.
That's your knowledge coming through there.
Yeah, it's not, it was, I don't think it was intended for that when it was built, but it's, you know, it's, I've been out there. I actually drove out there and looked at it. This is two or three ponds, so you know, it's not huge, but it's okay. Anyway, it's important that we manage that. It's an asset that exists there today, and we do have industries that depend on it. So with that in mind, I'm looking for a motion to approve those appointments. Chair and Fror.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd move to approve the resolution.
Hold on, hold on, I called you representative. I can't believe I did that. Can you start talking?
Would you? I answered a ball, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Fror.
Resolution nine.
Thank you. You know, it's not bad being downgraded every now and again, but.
It's upgraded. Let's, but let's go on point, it's upgraded.
Yeah, well, I was downgraded when he called me representative.
Oh.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution of the county commission, Weber County appointing trustees to the governing board of the Little Mountain Service Area as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second. Fatima?
Resolution nine. Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
You know, if I might, yes, just, I like it when you accept appointments to waters or sewer boards, Commissioner, because I think you specifically have some.
I do do some of that, don't I? Very good. Next item is a request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County, appointing members to the Ogden Musical Theater Advisory Board. Cassie Bybee.
Good morning, commissioners.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good, good morning. So this is to appoint Erin Hardigan. She's, she is a choreographer. She does choreograph and things, has her own business and things. She moved out of the area for a while and has moved back. She's graduate of Weber State, and we're thrilled to have her joining the board. And then Megan Stettler, she is also, she works down at the governor's office on the energy, in the energy department down at the governor's office, and she's a great asset to have connections with some of the Salt Lake area and reach our realm a little bit further with Ogden Musical Theater. So we're thrilled to have them. Then Ernest Gonzalez, he's been serving, but his time is up, so he's renewing for another four years. And then Pam Higginson, she is our board chair, and her time, because we, when we first formed the board, they just did a drawing, and so they came up, ended in 2018, so they want to renew to another four years of service on the board.
Very good, so four appointments and renewals.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner?
So two appointments, two renewals. Yep.
You know, this is a board that's been active in, in bringing back musical theater to Ogden with the Ogden Musical Theater, and then the Kids Act Up, and some other things. It's a fantastic cultural jewel for Weber County. I commend you. When you're ready, I'll entertain a motion.
I am ready. Go ahead.
And I'm not entertained, I'll, yeah. Will you entertain?
Well, you're, you all can come try out for the musical, because you're so entertaining. How does that sound?
Well, you know, Scott can actually sing.
No, I can't.
Scott can sing, so that's.
Okay, I am ready to entertain.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve Megan Stettler, Erin Hardigan, Ernest Gonzalez, and Pam Higginson to serve as members of the Ogden Musical Theater Board.
That would be resolution ten.
Second.
And second it. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cassie. Request number three is a request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Utah State University Extension 4H for the State 4H Show. Duncan Olson.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you? I understand you had a few issues over the weekend.
Well, hopefully, we've got them taken care of, but yeah, we had some sewer backup, and I think we're.
Some pumps that didn't want to pump, huh?
Yep, but.
So was the pump bad, or was the electricity too bad?
I think the electricity more than the pump, but.
We had a big debate about that.
Yeah, okay. We'll wait till the final things are going in. Go ahead and make that public.
We had quite a debate this morning on that.
It's not determined just yet, but that's where we're looking. We're excited about this contract between us and the USU Extension. It's been several years since we hosted the, the Utah State 4H Horse Show. The last time, I believe, our number showed roughly 300 stalls for us, and so the contract between us and them is, is discounting some rates to entice them to come to us instead of the state fair park, and we'll be recognized as a sponsor at a level of about $4,500. So this contract is for the next two years.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions, commissioners, about that? To Gage?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm assuming this is a statewide 4H show?
Yes.
And, and it's run through the USU Extension Office?
Correct.
Okay, so do they involve the local 4H community, or?
Yeah, so the.
Kind of tell me how this works.
So the, the contract is between us and, and the USU Extension that's right next door to us, that's on the fairgrounds, and the gal that, that runs the extension over there is actually the one that the contract's with, and so she'll be the, the main one heading up this charge, and it's kind of like us getting to host everybody, and so she'll be the main point of contact. But we're, we're really excited, because it hasn't been with us, and it's in one of our slower times. September is really hard, because you have to compete with Weber State and Utah and BYU and everybody else playing football, and so having an awesome kids program like the 4H Horse Show come and, and have us be that busy during those weekends is going to be really awesome.
Well, I fully support this. I've attended several 4H events over the past number of years with my wife and friends, and I tell you what those kids do and the instructors, that the time that they put in with their animals is, you know, is amazing, and what it does, it benefits the kids and the parents, so it points them in the right direction, and hopefully, they maintain that direction for a long period of time. So, you know, I fully support this program.
Yeah, we're, we're really excited. We're, we're loving the partnership that we're developing with the 4H and the FFA and the youth groups, because that's really our future, is getting, getting them to buy into this culture and be excited about that lifestyle.
Very good. Do you love it enough, you'd make a motion to approve?
I would move to approve the contract between Weber County and the Utah State University Extension for the State 4H Show, to be held at the Golden Spike Arena.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's been approved.
Thanks, commissioners.
Next is a request for approval of inter-local agreement between Weber County and Riverdale City for the funding of GSWAC Stormwater Collection. Mr. Blaine Fransen, can you explain GSWAC?
Yes, that's the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition. They serve, and it's a group of representatives from the cities, incorporated MS4 cities in the county as well as the county, and we also have three representatives from, excuse me, our county to the north.
Fox Elder.
Fox Elder County. So we had to change it from the Weber County Stormwater Coalition to Golden Spike Stormwater Coalition.
So I understand that as a stormwater coalition, but under the heading here, it says Separate Storm Sewer System.
That is.
It's not sewer, is it?
The MS4 permit is defined as the Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer System. That is the title of the permit, and that is a federal and state permit that we work under.
Okay, well, I just questioned that when I read it, and thought, huh, it seems like that should be a storm water system, not a storm sewer, so that was.
No argument there, Commissioner.
Yeah, you're right. I'm finding something there that's too big. Go ahead.
Okay. The agreement basically will be, these are the first two of about 19 agreements that we'll be bringing to you with each of the cities. The first one here with the city of Riverdale, the language will be identical to all of the other cities that we've come in. Basically, that agrees to fund to the county from each one of these cities approximately $2,000 or less each year, as needed to engage a professional manager to work with the coalition. So far, we have had a volunteer, excuse me, coalition chair. It is taking a lot of time for this chairperson to provide the leadership in this coalition, and so it's been the consensus of the coalition members that if we could possibly go to a professional manager, which would, right now, it's estimated about $1,000 a month for that coalition manager, that that would be the best way for us to continue. So we'd present this, excuse me, agreement to you with, with a resolution to approve for this agreement. We'll take any questions you might have.
Okay, but part of this agreement does not include what you just said about going to a full-time manager.
That only gives a funding to do that, and then we have to go out with an RFP, and there would be a separate contract to engage that person.
So that's something that you have to do as a board.
And that's, that's separated from this, sorry.
That is separated from this.
Yeah, I want to keep those things absolutely separate, so that we're clear and upfront. Okay, great.
Now, what this agreement that is proposed to you now would do, though, that will have the county put the RFP out and engage this consultant, and the coalition would be funding that to the county. The coalition is not a legal entity. It's a, basically, an advisory coalition to the cities and to the Utah State Stormwater Advisory Committee. So they can't engage that person, that they would have the county do the engaging of that, that professional manager.
And this agreement we're, we're approving here gives you the right to do that? Or do you already have that right?
To, to engage that person?
Mm-hmm.
As it is not a funded or adopted position, I do not believe that, I don't know, I would have to ask for legal counsel on that. I'm not certain. I think we have the right to engage by, by going through the process of a request for proposal, but unless we have, have funding to engage in a proposal, I don't think, I don't think we can. But please advise me.
I, I'll have to ask you to reframe the, I was researching another issue right now.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. The question is asked if, if we at present, without these interlocal agreements, can engage, the county can engage a professional manager for the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition, and I would add, without, without funding right now.
I, I would have to look, I would have to look at the actual terms of the interlocal agreement, and then I would have to confer with the attorney who reviewed it. I'm sorry, I just, I'm not, don't have the information to answer that right off.
That would be Corland.
Well, I look at item eight on here. It says hired consultant status. Is understood, well, it talks there about employee status and then hired consultant Were you going to hire a consultant to manage this, or are you going to hire an employee?
That would be a hired consultant.
Right.
They would go under the direction of, of a county employee, which would be, in essence, our county engineer.
All right, any other questions here?
Question?
Yes.
Commissioner? Is there a reason that we started with, I see on first resolution with Riverdale City? Is there a reason you started playing with Riverdale City and not any of the other 14 cities, or?
Riverdale City and Washington Terrace are the first two to complete their resolutions and submit them to us to approve.
Because of their due diligence and their process, that's so?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that to be clear as well.
Okay.
Very good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make, if you're ready to, I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution as presented by Mr. Fransen.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Second on that? All in favor, say aye.
A resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution. Sorry, Fatima, go ahead.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
That'd be resolution number.
Eleven.
Well, then the next one's got to be resolution number 12. And that lanes, from what I can see, it's the same thing, just with Washington Terrace.
That is correct.
Okay, and so like you say, we'll, we'll keep moving these along, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions, or I'm ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Weber County and Washington Terrace for funding of the GSWAC Stormwater Coalition.
That'll be, that'll be number 12.
Number 12.
Second. And a second. All in favor, say aye. Oops, roll call.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fror?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins?
Aye.
Very good. Thanks, Fatima.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blaine. Appreciate you. All right, the next item, number six, has been asked to be removed from the agenda, so we'll deal with it on another day. I don't think Quinn's feeling real good right now. So we'll go to number seven. Approval of the, of an amendment to, approval of amendment to original credit amendment by and between Weber County and Small Business Loans of Utah. Matt?
Good morning, Commissioner.
The way that was stated, it kind of got a little tongue-twisted there. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
I'll tell you what I can. I'm standing in for Hall and Will Banks. I did review this for legal purposes, but first off, just so you're aware, it's an amendment to the original agreement, and there's no substantive changes to the agreement. It doesn't change any obligations for the county, but the, the main reasons for the amendment was to clarify jointer procedures for Class A lenders, doesn't apply to Weber County, because we're a Class B lender under this agreement, and then to add a chairperson for the credit committee. The obligation of the county remains the same as 100,000 previously. The original agreement was approved back in January of 2018. So if you have any questions with regards to that, I mean, the purpose of the, the loans, of the original agreement was, let's see, I can't remember, it's USBGI, their acronym. It's the Utah Small Business Growth Initiative, or Business Loans of Utah. So they are authorized to, well, they're set up as the administrative agent, and then they review potential loans and then distribute those funds. I don't know if you have any questions for me, or?
Well, have we made any other loans under this agreement prior to this?
Have we made any? I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner.
Commissioner?
I do.
Yeah.
This, this, we have not made any other loans yet. This is a, but if I may?
Yeah.
This is something we did about, we started about 18 months ago, to allow a low obligation or a low-interest loan for startup businesses. It, it's a loan, it's not a grant, it is a way for small business to get started that are underfunded or undercapitalized, to help them grow specific to Weber County, to help grow the economy of Weber County. A fantastic program, a way for government to help small business, and it's underwritten by Zion's Bank, but to help small business grow and flourish here in Weber County with our own. So that's, you know, we look at so many, so often, we hear the story about Alan Hall and Marketstar, how he started out of a, out of a garage, and this is for opportunity for things like that to grow and, and bring employees, more employee base to, to Weber County, or, or these startups. And so what a great, it's a fantastic program for us. It's underwritten by Zion's Bank. We've done all the due diligence. I feel really comfortable with this. This is just, I think, clears up some language for us that we didn't anticipate when we, when we started. So it's very, to me, very kind of a simple cleanup measure.
Yes.
Commissioner Fror?
So Matt, answer me a couple of questions, if you would. So Commissioner Harvey, I think, answered once. This is underwritten by Zion's Bank?
Yes.
We're, we're playing with their money or county money? We're playing with their money or county money?
We'll be playing, so there's $100,000 is the county's obligation.
Okay. That's, so our liability as a county is $100,000?
Correct, Commissioner.
And who's, who is making the decision on the Weber County side to make sure that those dollars are put in the right direction or safeguarded?
Uh, good question.
There's a, if I might step in here?
Yes, thank you.
There's a board that actually makes that decision, and I think this speaks to the qualification of the board members, isn't that correct?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Part of the thing they're clarifying in the amended agreement is to add the chairperson.
Okay. So our maximum exposure, and I'm fairly familiar with loans, as you well know, sometimes loans are good, sometimes loans go bad. I always have to look on the bad side and what hap, so what happens if we loan a $500,000 and the loan goes bad? Our total debt structure would be $100,000 that we would lose?
Well, and we're not required, we wouldn't be providing any other funds than $100,000. We can provide more, but we have to do an amendment to the agreement.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to support that. I just, I think it's very, it's a good cause, but at the same time, anytime government's getting the business of loaning funds, I think we've seen in the past, even in this county, sometimes that can be misused. So we need to be very careful when, number one, government starts competing with private, and for false, for these small businesses, it probably makes some sense. But again, I would say we need to make sure that this has some very close eyes on it. It would not be good if we were to lose $1 from this in the future. And if we can benefit small business without losing any dollars, I would obviously support it.
Very good. I'm, I'm going to have this put on a future agenda to discuss the whole concept, because this is something I want to get into a little.
And it'd be good for, it'd be good to have a deeper, deeper dive with you, Commissioner Jenkins, and you, Commissioner Farrar, because there are some, there are more, and I can't speak to it off the top of my head or with what's presented today, but there are more details, I think, that would be worthy of you two hearing, and I think it would also help you have a greater understanding and greater support of, especially based on some of the questions you had. And you're exactly right, we questioned, we did exactly that. We questioned some of those things before, and we don't want to lose any, not a dollar.
Right.
We're hoping to turn those in, we're hoping to turn those into multiple dollars, actually.
This is a program that was started by previous commissions, and I have no problem digging into this.
No, we need to, we just need to make sure it's on the right track. Sometimes these programs, I've seen it happen before, start off with a good cause, and then they, we grow government, and at the end of the day, we lose control of the oversight that was originally intended. So I would hope that we, as a commission, have maintained oversight of this to make sure we're protecting, you know, $100,000 at the end of the day is probably not a huge sum of money, but it's still $100,000, and we need to make sure that that stays in Weber County coffers.
Very good. So with that, I'm ready to accept a motion.
Didn't you say you wanted to hold it?
No. I sort of wanted to look at it another time.
And Commissioners, just, just to add, I apologize. Ms. Wilbanks and I are happy to come and discuss with you individually more in depth.
Terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, we look forward to that opportunity.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the amendment to the original credit agreement by and between Weber County and the Utah Small Business Loans of Utah.
Very good. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Very good. Thank you very much, Matt. Well, this has been a good meeting. Time for Commissioner comments. Do either of you have anything you'd care to jump in with?
No, I just, I thought it was a good discussion. I think, obviously, this points out some areas that we need to take some deeper dives into and look very strongly at in a couple of different areas.